Just looking at.
Yep.
Alright, so I'd like to call this um East Granby planning a zoning meeting for July fourth two thousand and four to order. Uh and happy Fourth of July to everyone. I hope you all had plenty of burgers and accoutrements. So it looks like um it's gonna be kinda quick here and can we just do a roll call since I'm not sure I'm really seeing everyone? Tom Derlinga, um Commissioner. Here. Okay, I think you need to unmute.
Tom, you've got Jay, you have Brian O'Connor, you have Austin, um and then we have someone on the phone. I'm not sure if that's a commission member or just a member of the public.
Okay. I'm gonna jump right in, I'm gonna jump right into it and I also apologize if I'm a little unorganized. We we just drove back from a ten hour drive from Virginia and got back like an hour and a half ago.
Tom, I just wanna verify, John, that's you on the eight four four?
Yep. That was seven two two.
Okay.
Hi, John.
Hey, how you doing, Tom?
Good. Alright, so um is there anyone from the public that's online that would like to discuss any non-agenda items? I'm gonna take that as a no. Uh can I get a motion to accept the minutes from June eleventh?
I'll make a motion.
Um, I'll second that. Any discussion? Anybody have any problems with the mo- the minutes? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um. So I did not have a chance to get to the town hall, so I don't know if we had any communications.
You did not.
Okay, good. Then you wanna jump right into zoning enforcement report?
Uh there was no written report from Mark. I have nothing for my planner's report. And then I believe Austin is the one going to the Prague meetings. Austin, have you been to one and is there any updates for the commission?
Yes, I have, but no, there from what I recall, there were no updates.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing of importance, at least.
Sounds good.
Um, doesn't look like we have anything under old business.
Nope.
So uh new business, are they on on the line or are we just kinda discussing this?
Nope, they are. So um I see Nick on here. It looks like he's turning his camera on. Hi, Nick.
Hi, Nick.
Hey, Tom. Happy Fourth of July to everyone on the on the online.
Nick, are you going to, oh, are you going to want to share your screen?
Yeah, I've I've got a few slides that just it won't take long, but.
No, no, no worries. Uh Michelle, I know you can't talk, but if you can make sure that the ability to screen share and the permissions are set up so that Nick has the ability to do that, please.
So Nick, I just wanna confirm, this is the Z parking uh area that we're talking about, yeah?
Yeah, at Three International Drive. Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Alright, Nick, you should be able to share. Um Michelle said she changed the settings for you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Michelle. Oh, I'm still getting host disabled. Participant screen sharing, so I think I still need to be granted sharing ability.
I'm able to and I'm not a host. Um, were you gonna share the plan that you sent up? You got it? Okay.
Yeah. Alright, so can everyone see my screen?
Oh, yes.
Perfect. Fantastic. Yeah, so so like I said, uh thanks a lot for this opportunity. Um, my name is uh Nick Wood. I'm with Corporate Land Strategies. We're actually a planning firm uh located in uh in Ontario in Canada. So we work a lot with uh Parket Enterprises up and on a on a few projects up here and and uh they own obviously a property at Three International Drive. So we've been kind of uh coordinating with Robin and she's been very patient, her and Michelle have been very patient with us, so we're appreciative of that. And uh so she recommended um I think uh kinda coming to you uh to the commission. Kinda talk about this proposal that we're 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 seeking to achieve here and and just get some some feedback um at this time. I'm I'm joined by uh Kerry Chow. He uh he represents uh Parket Enterprises. So um once we go through, like I said, there's only about five slides that uh three slides really or four slides. And uh anything related to the to the business side of things, he's gonna be able to uh answer any of those questions, I think, that you might have. So um I'll I'll jump right into it.
Um, Nick, if I could, I've got just a quick question.
Of course.
Has a property been purchased or is it still for sale?
No, the the property's on the market right now. Uh right now, we actually um co-own it right now with uh with Pro Park and I'm another partner. So we're we're joint ventures in the in the parking asset. Uh we're in the process of buying our our partners uh on on the site. And well, a hundred percent after that, um we're looking for the the option of uh doing truck parking uh here. Um and uh and potentially solving as well.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Um actually Kerry's pretty much uh summarized that up into uh into even less than the four slides that I put together. But I guess for context, we're the site's been outlined in the red dash line. Uh we're on the south side of Highway twenty or Rainbow Road, uh just at the southeast corner of Highway uh twenty and International Drive. So we the site's about five and a half acres. And uh it's surrounded by uh employment uh uses as as you're all aware, well aware. We put together just a really simple, high-level concept plan to more conceptualize how this uh development could be operated. And it's really more for discussion purposes. So uh some of the details um include approximately fifty-three parking spaces. We've tried to uh accommodate and achieve the zoning regulation requirements for truck parking. Um the GFA for the self-storage, which is the other use that's being proposed at the site. Um, we we've located that to the southeast of the property towards a large drive. Um and that's got devoted parking spaces to it and approximately um a hundred and thirty uh self-storage units. Again, more for discussion purposes. I think we'd like to refine it based on the commission's comments and feedback that we get back. Um as you're all well aware, the subject property is 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 uh zone business zone, so under section VA. Uh permitted uses obviously include office, bank, studio, retail stores. Uh the manufacturing of products sold on the premises is also permitted. And then there's a number of special permit uses like automotive sales, new and used, and service and repairs. So uh effectively, the the proposal that we'd be seeking to bring forward um through a text amendment application is is really to add truck parking and self-storage as as Kerry outlined. Um it's really to kind of uh broaden the tenancy opportunities of the site. Um we think that it does meet the needs of the community, particularly um for the employment area and the surrounding area, as well as the residential needs in the broader East Granby area. Um and uh the self-storage would help assist with accommodating the increasing storage needs of multi-family housing that we're seeing obviously up here, but I think you're starting to see, you're seeing a lot of down there as well. Um so once we receive any feedback that you would be willing to provide us tonight, um we'd integrate into a text amendment application and I think uh bring forward to you fairly quickly. Um but uh tonight, we're looking to get an understanding of of uh of your thoughts on the this truck parking and self-storage. Timing uh as well as submission requirements would be uh would be helpful to have a discussion as well. So that's pretty much it for a proposal. So um yeah, thanks a lot for this opportunity.
Okay, so so right now you guys are looking to purchase this property from the Z parking people and then potentially just expand your opportunity to what you can do with it. Is that?
They're part owners, Tom.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't realize that. Okay.
They're basically looking for feedback as to your the commission's thoughts on establishing what essentially is standalone truck parking because it's not allowed um in any of our zoning districts and uh self-storage, which is currently not allowed in the business district.
Um, okay. It's interesting. I guess I'd have to think about that.
Yes, but right now we have uh the the site is it's parking for off off airport. Um like the airport right now uh with the the new development uh uh from the airport. There's just an abundance of of parking um uh for for Bradley Airport. Um so parking operations have have struggled. Um we are right now kind of eighty percent um equity uh of of the bill of of the property. Um we're we're just gonna take it out so we own it outright. It's 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 a joint venture, a little bit convoluted. Um kind of uh kind of distribution structure, but we're gonna uh run by ourselves. Uh and then uh we've been in touch with um uh different groups on on truck parking. Uh so uh potential interim use uh and then, you know, like longer term uh market itself is uh we own a few kind of uh off-off airport parking facilities in the States uh as well as uh close to two million square feet of industrial in in uh in Canada. And uh uh we would try to look for kind of private uses uh going forward. Uh but right now, uh with the relationships that we have, uh I think we can get uh we can operate as off-off airport parking and potential um uses down the road, so.
So are these trucks that are just that need someplace to park before they start, you know, pick up their next load and then go to wherever they need to go and they're there for anywhere from a few days to a few months or something like that? I'm just trying to get my head around that.
Yeah, it's uh in touch with kind of these like, you know, large uh distribution um uh of the businesses, like, you know, that they they have that's uh they they need to park their their trucks somewhere. Um so it would be there, um you know, easy to um move in uh within the day, but uh sometimes they might park a little longer. But it it's just uh it would be parking for um kind of distribution.
Okay, alright. So then like like um flow over from Dollar Tree or the Hallecon, which is around the corner or something like that, where they need some extra spaces to leave a truck for a little while?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, alright, that's interesting.
Sounds a little bit like what Jonesers was doing without the warehouse.
Yeah, but Jonesers, I think Jonesers was all their own trucks.
I thought it was kind of a parking area.
I think he had a little bit that may have been for storage, Tom, on there, if I remember his proposal.
Okay, so it wasn't all their own trucks. They were gonna also just store some other trucks there. Uh yes, actually, that's right. I do recall. Yeah.
But but exactly, it's it's just that, uh you know, so in in turn, uh we have just think we can uh work with uh potentially uh Exxon or or, like, you know, other kind of these warehousing tenants, businesses in in the area and uh there's a need for this business right now. Uh like longer term, uh obviously wanna figure out higher use for the site. But uh right now, um just with the the operations of the being the real parking, uh the off-airparking, it's it's just a proper business.
Hmm.
Um yeah, just uh happy to answer any more questions like who, like, you know, like they're getting the market itself, uh you know. Uh we we own a bunch of uh sites, parking assets uh in the in the States in addition to this one. Um. Nashville, we have the off-airparking. It's under a different brand, not Z Park, but I know Z Park's been here for a bit. Um, we're we're in uh Denver. Yeah, but airport, we've been over there. Um.
Let me uh let me ask you something, though. So I mean, so within the commission, this whole area is is sort of the entryway into East Granby. And that's come up uh often in area in properties in these areas. Would you guys be opposed to doing like additional screening of some sort? Just to kind of um screen a bunch of trucks away from anybody, you know, come people coming in off of the expressway onto uh Rainbow Road, which leads right into the center of East Granby?
Uh not, yeah, I'm not sure uh uh what, like, you know, in terms of screening, like, you know, uh operate in terms of operating uh like, you know, truck like a weight, like, you know, kind of.
Well, I'm I'm not, I'm not really sure whether it was either fencing or or uh or um vegetation or something like that. Uh I'm not sure. I'm just kinda thinking of that area and and having a bunch of trucks.
Tom?
Yeah.
Tom, um well, um I'm just looking at the concept plan and it sure looks like the intent is that to use the uh truck parking going all the way out to um Rainbow Road, if I read it right. Um, I can't really tell because I don't have a good view of it, but proposed access to um the site as shown on this concept plan, is that coming off of Rainbow? Can you see that, Tom?
Let me, I'm trying to bring that up right now.
Yeah, if I can, if I could jump into, no, the the concept plan, I think access is only provided off of international right now. And that we would, we would be me, we, yeah, we would just be proposing to maintain that.
What I'm more suggesting is.
I'm I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, you go first. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so Robin, if I could, so the existing use of that property, I believe, is pre-existing, non-conforming use. Um, almost positive on that. Could you confirm that for us?
Yep.
The Z Park.
Right.
Right. And uh, you know, for a good long time now, the commission has tried very hard to um try to remove um not Z parking necessarily, but these types of uses. So that when we came around to having people looking to have these types of uses, um self-storage and also uh truck parking and whatnot, we tried to move it off into Commerce Park B successfully over on Russell Road. Um and then uh the uh self-storage that got proposed somewhere off of uh Hazelwood, Connecticut Drive South. So to sit there, to Tom's point, to sit there and look at this um with a limited amount of um business-owned property and and the business-owned property is on Route twenty and Tom didn't, Tom didn't use the word gateway to East Granby, but you've heard it from me many a times, so. What's that?
Sorry. I had I had a phone call coming in. I just canceled. Sorry.
I'm sorry. So so Robin, it I I think I'm right on that, that, you know, that the Z parking, you know, is is definitely an, you know, non-conforming, pre-existing use. And if if in fact Z parking were to disappear or there was a proposed new use, um, you know, the whole idea of auto parking would would go bye-bye at this location um as proposed in the concept plan. And reminding us all, of course, that we're not talking about property at Three International Drive. We're talking about a uh text amendment application uh changing section five of business industrial zones to uh allow for these uh two permitted um uses in the business B zone. So I I don't think anyone tonight should get bogged down on the location of the property and the whole idea of looking at the concept plan as thing more than a concept plan.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going, because if we do a text amendment now, that opens it up to the entire zone.
Right, which which there aren't many properties now business-owned in town, but there are still a few. And and Robin, you might be able to just kind of throw that out there to to everybody. And then one last thing I I would just ask and um but there's no um that that's not business zone in the uh in the immediate surrounding area is zoned Commerce Park A or Commerce Park Transitional?
Uh Commerce Park A.
Yeah, yeah, which which would make sense because because of its location on the state highway.
Yeah, there's only like six properties in town that are its own business with only two being at the gateway area.
Right, yep, yep.
Hmm.
Is the rear, is the rear portion of this property a butts? Is that a butt then Commerce Park A?
It does.
And I and is that the um, that's not the Domino's, right?
That'll be across the street.
Uh.
Yeah, they're right across International Drive.
Essentially, this is behind Route sixty-six gas station.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right. Yep. Well, it's
In which my
and would wrap around, right?
Yeah, my my original thought process was if this was even a thing to move forward, that we would consider is maybe putting this self-storage facing Rainbow and doing some nice landscape and the trucks further back where you can't see them that way, you know, some of these trucks act as a billboard and, you know, we we don't necessarily wanna see all kinds of stuff in truck parking from twenty as you're coming in. That's if this was a consideration. That's just a thought I had.
Um, we we'd be open to uh um in terms of uh uh escaping uh but the visibility from from just uh fixing it up. Um like I gave this, this is uh
So so if Robin, if the commission decided that allowing for self-storage and truck parking uh in the um the business zone, is there a way that there could be just, you know, looking at it as a setback off of state highway?
Um, yeah, I mean, you could definitely put parameters on it. The other area that
I was wondering if you could put a on, could put a a setback requirement as to the use, you know what I'm saying?
Sure, yeah.
Kinda.
You could, yep.
What are the other, what are the other properties that are also in this uh business zone? Did you say there were five?
Yeah, so they're over here. It's the front of some properties along one eighty-nine, Tom. Hopefully, the screen moved over and you guys can see them.
Yeah.
Yep. And then part of the plaza down at the at the liquor cabinet.
Um, I think that was changed, yeah.
But part of it was still business.
No, so all of this is um so see liquor cabinet.
That's right at the end of um.
Liquor cabinet is part of the village district, village center.
Right.
It it is now, okay.
Yep.
Because I know that when farms came in, it came in, it was still business zone.
Okay. Yeah, so it looks like it got changed.
And I know that, and I know that that liquor cabinet was for a good long time. But I know that we were trying to and we were trying to extend the village center out. And then I think maybe when the adoption of the Commerce Park Transitional, we looked at those properties and said, okay, the Transitional Zone's gonna replace the business zone in that neck of the woods. So I I would agree with you. There's five or six.
Yeah.
They're up in particular location and then they're over on Route one eighty-nine.
Right.
Think like the, like the fish market?
Yep.
Yep, and a couple of adjacent properties to that.
Yep.
Good.
Nick, you wanted to add in, chime in?
Yeah, yeah, I did. I I didn't know uh when the we're in the right mode.
No, raising your hands, perfect.
Yeah, is it? Okay, good. Um, so so if if we were to um switch the self-storage brain to the front to cr- and and create a little bit of screening for the truck parking, would there, would there be any concern as to the size of the self-storage facility um itself?
If I think my my concern is that if we do a text amendment here, we're opening that up to to anything that's in that zone. And uh I'm just trying to, I'm also trying to get my head around the other properties in that zone. That that might take a minute.
So across the street, Tom, um it's the Enterprise Truck Rental.
Across the street from Z Parking?
From Z Parking, yeah.
Oh, 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 yes, 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 on the other side of Rainbow Road, yeah.
On the other side of Rainbow Road, so a portion, it's two different properties that are all used by Enterprise. So a portion of it is Commerce Park A and the other portion is um the business zone in this direct area.
Mm-hmm.
That's that's a, that's a property that um so that's where the original auto auction is, if you can recall that, Tom.
Yes, oh, yes, yes, I, yeah.
Probably Barrenos.
Yep.
And and we've, we're able to, working with uh the then applicant, we're able to to get them to, you know, find their way to the the site behind over by the airport.
Yes, yep.
Uh, you know, Russell and whatever. And when the property then was uh was conveyed, um, Enterprise was able to come in because there wasn't discontinuation of the automotive use. But I'm pretty sure if there had been someone other than Enterprise coming in, I think that someone else had come in, that would have discontinued because I'm pretty sure that's pre-existing, non-conforming. Would you agree with that, Robin?
Yep.
Yes, that sounds familiar.
And 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 the whole idea, and the whole idea, and this was like twenty years in the making, but the whole idea was to remove auto, you know, automotive uses from, you know, from the Route twenty corridor.
Yeah, yep.
Now, I I I, you know, I I could see or I could understand, you know, um, you know, self-storage, but I I would have a hard time with self-storage, you know, right out on Route twenty for the same reason I have a hard time with, you know, auto parking, truck parking, uh car sales and anything else on Route twenty, because that's the type of thing that we've been trying to, you know, reduce, mitigate, eliminate, avoid for for quite some time. With with a a a reasonable look at the um wording of um section five business industrial zones. And if it's crafted well enough and creates enough of a buffer that nobody knows that the self-storage is there except for the people that, you know, are leasing spaces there, you know, it it's something that, you know, I I don't know if I'm gonna say that I'd be in favor of, but, you know, it certainly would seem, you know, doable if done in a in in an appropriate manner and 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 well-crafted in terms of the uh the regulation.
Yeah, we would have, I think we'd have to kind of see how we would be able to um sort of put that into words. Because it's gonna, it's it's like, again, my concern is just it's it's across the entire, so.
Mm-hmm.
The 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 other, and I'm not sure if 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 you've entertained something this, what about like um uh and 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 maybe the scale of the text amendment doesn't allow for this, but what about a like a temporary um uh language that establishes the the use as temporary for a certain period of time? Um, is it like, i- is that something that that would appeal to the commission at least? I I don't know.
Yeah, there's temporary uses aren't really something we look to put into the regulations. So they're looking for uses that are compatible, that can be permanent. Um, so it's probably not something that I would support as a planner.
Okay.
So I mean, also, just to be clear, we're not taking any action on this tonight. We're So, I mean, also, just to be clear, we're not taking any action on this tonight. We're, we're sort of just kind of mulling this over and seeing how it might fit in. And, I mean, the fortunate thing, there is only five properties really in, within the East Granby that have that zoning, so we really have to take a look at that.
So I know we have a couple other commission members. I don't know if they want to sort of give some feedback, Brian and Austin too, or I see Dave is on here as well. He jumped on. Is there anything you guys want to add?
Yeah, no, I do share that same sentiment of, I know, like, you guys were talking about the possible screening and that kind of thing. I think that's definitely a concern for entrance into the town.
Anybody else have anything to chime in on?
I would say the idea of a setback. It, I mean, again, though, but looking at the other zones. Or not the other zones, the other
Properties.
Properties, right, within the zone. I mean, it would have to be a setback on a state highway, is that?
Yeah, they're both state highways, numbered state highways, where the, the two different areas are. It's Route one eighty-nine and
One eighty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The properties on one eighty-nine are very, they're split zones, so there's a small portion that's, that's business in the front along there, and then behind it is actually a cultural, so depending on how it's worded, you know, those things might not be able to land on those properties because of the distance that the zone stops.
Uh, anybody else have anything they would like to contribute? Sounds like it. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question, just listening to the question. So what, with the idea of, of a setback for the automotive? Is that, I guess, no decisions right now? Is that something?
I, I think that that's, I think that that might be a possibility, but I think that we're going to have to kind of discuss and look at all the other properties that are in that same zone within East Granby, and, you know, because it has to be a fairly generic decision for, for all those properties. You know, we can't specifically make regulations for a specific property.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, we've been, just, just for context, so we've been in touch with the, kind of those, the businesses, like requiring this the service. So, like, you know, you mentioned the Exxon and et cetera. Like, you know, there is the the demand for that business right now, so the groups have been, you know, like, I'm, I'm just saying that the groups have been asking is this potential? We'd love to try to give them an answer, you know, but obviously going on the committees. So.
Yeah, I think, I think to sort of lean to your, your kind of questioning theory is that the commission's giving you feedback on what a text amendment proposal might be to include for them to consider it, so a possible setback from Route twenty, I for landscape buffering. I have another town that I work in where we actually have a self-storage facility. We had design guidelines because it was on a state route and we wanted it to look more rural in nature. So, we were very specific about the design of it and the use of certain materials, so that's something you might want to consider also. So I think those are the things that lend itself to the commission considering it, once you guys write something and come in. And that's the best feedback they can give you, is what they would like to see as part of any type of proposal for consideration.
This has been, this has been helpful on my, on my, you know, I think for us, yeah, like, you know, appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, and, and, and from my side, yeah, I agree, Kerry. I think, I think this is, this helps us from a concept layout perspective. I would take a lot of this, a lot of this back. From a, from a process perspective, outside of the minutes, I think, from this, from this commission meeting, it's now the responsibility and an obligation, I guess, on us to continue this forward, to take back what we've heard and, and bring an application forward if, if, if we choose to do so, I guess. Am I right in, in understanding that, Robin?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that, that, that makes, that makes perfect sense. I really appreciate it. Everyone's time on, especially yours, Robin. You've been very gracious in your time.
Yeah.
All right. Well, if nobody else has anything they want to add to that, I just want to thank you guys for your interest and consideration, and we'll look forward to whatever you have to submit.
Excellent. Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Hey, Tom?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll move for adjournment if you want it.
I'll second that. All right. Hey, everybody have a great night.
Night, everyone.
Take care.
See you next time.